Good morning. This meeting of the Baltimore City Council Health, Environment and Technology Committee is now called to order. I am Danielle McCray, Councilwoman representing the 2nd District and Chair of the Committee. In attendance, we have members of the Committee, Councilwoman Felicia Porter of the 10th District. From the Council President's Office, we have Preston Lewis. And from the Mayor's Office, we have Nina Thimless. And also, we have Councilman Ryan Dorsey from the 3rd District. Before we get started, please take a moment to turn off or silence your cellphone. Today, the Committee is holding a hearing on one resolution. Council Resolution 23-0185R, Reproductive Options for Everyone for the Purpose of Calling on All Units of City Government Receiving City Funds to Safeguard and Individuals' Right to Abortion Care by, unless otherwise required by Maryland or federal law, refraining from using city funds to store, catalog, provide, monitor, or collect certain information that could be used to retaliate against an individual seeking abortion care. At this time, we're going to hear from the sponsor of the bill, Councilwoman Felicia Porter.
Good morning, everyone, and thank you all for being here to discuss this very important issue. As many of you know, the overturn of Roe v. Wade posed grave challenges to our nation's social and political landscape. Since then, anti-choice legislatures across the nation have enacted policies and procedures to identify and punish persons seeking reproductive care. Currently, 14 states have banned abortion in almost all circumstances and have established harsh penalties for service providers and persons seeking out-of-state abortions. Adversely, the state of Maryland has increased protections for persons seeking reproductive safeguards and reproductive safeguards. The bill today outlines really an opportunity for the city of Baltimore to really hone in on reproductive health protections in the city of Baltimore and surrounding jurisdictions. Similarly, as we move forward with this legislation, I want to just highlight the recent data that's coming back about the overturn of the Dobbs decision, as demonstrated on NPR this morning. We understand that this overturn actually did the opposite of what was intended for this ban on reproductive and abortion rights. We understand that we must empower and uplift our communities through equitable access to healthcare services and refrain from the criminalization of reproductive healthcare. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. We're going to hear from our agencies. We will start with the Baltimore City Health Department.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. My name is Julia Roche, and I am the Legislative Affairs Director with the Baltimore City Health Department. And I am accompanied today by Rebecca Deneen, who is our Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health. The Baltimore City Health Department requests a favorable report on this resolution. And if I might, I would just like to very briefly talk a little bit more about current state laws, which the bill sponsor alluded to just now in her testimony. So, as she shared, the state has really bolstered our protections for people who receive abortions here, whether they are Maryland residents or even if they are from out-of-state and they come here to have an abortion. So, a couple bills were passed and signed into law this last legislative session. One, titled Reproductive Health Services: Protected Information and Insurance Requirements, actually prohibits clinical information about patients who have received legal healthcare here, including abortion, from having their information shared out-of-state unless they request that their information be shared. So, this is wonderful. We're very happy about this. So, this would help protect people who come from states where abortion is not legal. It would just make it so that their information, if they got an abortion here, that information could not be shared out-of-state without their explicit permission. And then, another bill, which is sort of a companion to that, the Reproductive Health Protection Act, would prohibit people from being required to testify or produce evidence in another state about healthcare that they received legally here in Maryland. And a wonderful thing about this law is it also protects providers. So, a Maryland provider who provided an abortion here could not then be compelled to testify out-of-state about an abortion that they provided here. And then, their patients could also not be compelled to do that. So, this is wonderful, and just wanted to share that information about that state law. And then, my colleague Rebecca here can answer questions that you might have about our data gathering and sharing practices. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm our City Solicitor's Office.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. Ebony Thompson, Acting City Solicitor, issuing testimony in strong support of City Council Resolution 23-0185R. I just want to give some context to the importance of this resolution. Some background is instructive as to how the United States got to where it is today on the issue of abortion. Abortion has been a medical procedure in the United States since the earliest colonial times. It was considered legally until quickening, which was the first movement felt by the mother, usually between 14 and 20 weeks. Abortion was considered a safe procedure and was regularly practiced in colonial America by midwives and physicians. In the 1800s, regulation of abortion first started taking hold, and the use of quickening as the point of viability became illegal. In the early 1900s, it was believed that medical doctors sought to make abortions performed by midwives illegal to assert their authority in a male-dominated field. The trend towards restricting abortion and criminalizing providing abortions continued throughout the next six decades. In 1973, the United States Supreme Court decided Roe v. Wade, establishing a woman's right to an abortion. And Roe, the court opined that a woman's right to an abortion was implicit in the right to privacy protected by the 14th Amendment. That right, however, was not unlimited, and the court held that states could regulate abortions to protect important interests in safeguarding health. The court determined that during the first trimester, the abortion decision was in the hands of the woman who was pregnant and that states cannot regulate. During the second trimester, the state, in the interest of the health of the mother, may regulate abortion procedures in ways that are reasonably related to maternal health. In the third trimester, the state can regulate in the interest of the potential life, and if it chooses, can regulate and even prescribe abortion, except when necessary, for the life or health of the mother. During almost the next 50 years, abortions could be obtained in a safe environment with trained practitioners and hospitalization, and death from abortion was effectively ended. In 2022, everything changed with the Supreme Court's ruling in Dobbs v. Jackson Women's Health Organization. The court overturned Roe v. Wade by ruling that there was no constitutional right to abortion. This allowed the states to pass laws regarding pre-viability abortion bans. The court found that there was no fundamental right to an abortion under the right to privacy, and therefore, laws would be judged on the rational basis standard. States could, therefore, regulate for any legitimate reason. Since Dobbs was decided, there has been an uptick in state legislative activities on both sides of the issue. The restrictions being put in place include total or near-total bans on abortion, criminal and civil enforcement via penalties, even use of bounty hunters to find people who have violated abortion bans. There have also been constitutionally suspect attempts to block online access to abortion information and prohibit travel to other states for the purposes of obtaining an abortion. These measures disproportionately impact the well-being of historically marginalized communities, and research has shown that denying access to abortion is an economic justice issue because it has multiple future impacts, including increased health consequences, economic instability, and gender-based violence. The women impacted by these consequences are typically women of color and women living below the poverty line. In states supporting reproductive rights, the response has been swift as well. States have amended their constitutions to protect the right of women to abortion and have repealed harmful and obsolete laws. States have increased security at clinics and expanded insurance access. In addition, some states have supported the right to travel by enacting shield laws to protect those who seek abortions outside their home states from criminal prosecution by prohibiting disclosure of medical records. Maryland is instituting measures to preserve access to care by amending its constitution to protect reproductive rights. As stated in the Health Department's testimony in 2023 session, the General Assembly enacted the Maryland Right to Reproductive Freedom Act. The act proposes a constitutional amendment that provides that abortion is legal in Maryland until the fetus is viable. Later-term abortions may be allowed if the mother's health is in danger or there is a fetal anomaly. The General Assembly may also pass various laws for protecting reproductive rights. A particular interest for the purposes of Resolution 185R is HB 812, which prohibits disclosure of clinical information about patients who have obtained legally protected healthcare in Maryland, including reproductive healthcare records of residents of other states. As the battle to protect reproductive rights goes on, a disturbing trend is emerging involving the weaponization of medical records of those seeking abortion care outside of their home state. Anti-abortion states are using medical records to prosecute providers and those seeking reproductive care. This includes using medical records to determine if a person has sought an abortion outside of their home state due to lack of access in their home state. As noted above, Maryland has proactively passed legislation regulating access to health information in certain contexts. There has also been action at the federal and state level to protect this type of medical information and preserve the privacy of these records. The Biden Administration has proposed modifications to HIPAA to support reproductive health privacy. The proposed changes to HIPAA include prohibiting use of disclosure of public health information where the use is for criminal, civil, or administrative investigation into or proceedings against any person in connection with seeking, obtaining, providing, or facilitating reproductive healthcare. Following the President's lead, Maryland and other states have enacted laws prohibiting providers from releasing abortion-related identifiable health information to law enforcement officials. The District of Columbia's effort, known as the Human Rights Sanctuary Amendment Act of 2022, prohibits district officers and employees from expending any resources in relation to an interstate criminal or civil investigation or proceeding, targeting any person for receiving or seeking an abortion, performing an abortion, or assisting in any of these activities. Cities and counties in various parts of the country have also taken steps to bolster privacy protections around abortion-related information. In line with the state constitutional amendments call for the state to ensure it is not burdening the fundamental right of reproductive freedom, including but not limited to the ability to make effective decisions whether to continue or terminate one's own pregnancy, Baltimore City has proposed a Resolution 23-0185R. By approving this resolution, the mayor and City Council of Baltimore are joining in the effort to prevent the use of reproductive healthcare information to prosecute those seeking reproductive healthcare. Resolution 23-0185R calls upon all units of civil city government receiving city funds to safeguard an individual's right to abortion care by, unless otherwise required by Maryland or under federal law, refraining from using city funds to store, catalog, provide, monitor, or collect certain information that could be used to retaliate against an individual seeking abortion care. As the leader of the Law Department, I support this resolution and recognize that it is essential, not only to protecting women's health, but also to filling the health equity gap when it comes to maternal health among Black and minority women in the city of Baltimore and for those who come to the city seeking healthcare. I am committed to providing the legal assistance necessary to city agencies to support them in implementing this resolution and securing the privacy of the health records of women seeking abortions to fulfill the intent of this resolution. All legal means consistent with state and federal law will be employed to prevent the disclosure of such records for the purpose of prosecuting women seeking reproductive healthcare and their healthcare providers. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We're going to move to the bill sponsor for questions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My first question actually has to do with how the city plans to monitor the storage and distribution of clinical or personal information from persons that are coming into our city, coming into our city for this care.
Thank you, Councilwoman Porter. I'm Rebecca Deneen, Assistant Commissioner for Maternal and Child Health. We run two clinics for adolescent reproductive health and for adult reproductive health, one at 1515 North Avenue and the other one at 1200 East Fayette Street. We use an electronic medical record in our building, which is entirely protected information. We do not provide abortion services at the Baltimore City Health Department clinics because we're under Title 10, which does not allow us to do that. We will, the only information we would ever have regarding a woman would be if they provided background medical information that would support the quality of care of a client. So, that would potentially be in the electronic medical record. And then, we make referrals for clients for whatever health needs they have, and those are also in that electronic medical record. Again, that's a record that protects all the information about a woman's health like any other health entity would do and is subject to all the laws in Maryland.
Thank you. And one of the things that I had researched was about data breaches to those electronic medical health records. And so, can you speak to the QA process that you all have been pleased to ensure that protection?
I would direct that question, if we can, to our Director of Information Technology, who's instituting our electronic medical record. Her name is Asia Chumiachi. I can't pronounce her last name very well, but she will certainly, where this new EMR that we're putting in is one of the EPIC, part of EPIC's, which is the electronic medical record that many institutions are using, but that, one that's used by local government. And we will make sure that she comes back to you with a response on how those controls are put in place. But I can say that we've never, in the 15 years I've been at the Health Department, had any kind of data breach on medical information.
Okay, that's actually great to hear. Other states are not as successful with that, so that's actually great to hear. My next question then actually has to do with the collaboration with other law enforcement entities, such as the Sheriff's Department, MTA Police, and other public safety agencies. How are you all collaborating with them to ensure that we are, they are adhering to those respective, these respective laws, but then also, if there are any non-traditional avenues that women are coming into our city, how we are mitigating that? The only reason why I bring that up is because we actually have a hearing later on today related to human trafficking, and we understand that there are traditional and non-traditional ways that women are coming into this city, such as truck routes, different homeless shelters. How are we looking at that, how are we mitigating that from an inter-agency perspective with other public safety agencies?
I would have to get back to you on a specific answer to that particular question, but we, you know, from the perspective of just security at our clinic, we have a security guard located at both clinics. We have, who are usually police officers who are off-duty. And, but in terms of, I think what you're asking, or maybe I can rephrase what I think you're asking, that if somebody comes into our services who may be illegally trafficked, how are we notifying? And those measures, I honestly would need to go back to the clinic director.
That's fine.
And so, note.
Yeah, and the only, another reason why I bring that up is because in South Baltimore in general, I mean, the increase of the Latinx population that are going to our hospitals, utilizing hospital services that are indeed trafficked. And we have hospital measures in place from a nursing staff, from, you know, the caretaker, like, we have certain measures at the hospitals where they ensure proper, you know, proper protocols and proper protections and just kind of like flags for any type of human trafficking. And I would assume that there would be some collaboration with the City Health Department and other agencies as well. So, I would appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Dorsey, do you have any questions? Do you have any additional questions? We're going to move to public testimony. Karen Nelson. And for members of the public who are testifying, please state your first and last name for the record, and also if you're representing an organization. Thank you.
Got it. Thank you. Needed tech support this morning in so many ways. Hi, everyone. I'm Karen Nelson. I'm the CEO of Planned Parenthood of Maryland, and thank you for allowing me to provide testimony. We did provide testimony in writing, but also, we feel that this is very important and want to testify in favor of Council Bill 230185R. And really appreciate the Council for introducing this and want to, you know, reiterate the importance of this bill. We do run a reproductive healthcare clinic here in the city of Baltimore on Howard Street, and I want to thank you for this bold step to introduce the bill that would codify the city's own version of the 2023 Reproductive Health Protection Act into city code. We feel that this piece of legislation is a crucial statement that Marylanders and Marylanders, people traveling to Maryland for care, have nothing to fear when they seek care here in the city of Baltimore. Furthermore, it really is, and I'm trying not to repeat some of the things that were already said this morning, but, you know, we feel like this is a value statement by the City Council, by the city of Baltimore, that shows that Baltimore cares about the healthcare for its citizens and additionally, cares about the providers that are providing and practicing care within the city. I want to comment that what Ms. Thompson captured in her testimony was, is exactly what we're seeing here in the city, in our health centers. We do provide birth control, sexually transmitted infection testing and treatment, cancer screenings, and of course, abortion care. And it is that care of providing abortion that is, you know, it's a legally protected service here in this state, but it does put clinicians at risk when they are treating clientele from other states where bans are in place. So, this legislation really does provide that layer of protection for our providers from adverse actions, and we think that that is critical to recruiting and retaining healthcare providers here in the city and maintaining the access to the high-quality reproductive healthcare. I'll just give one quick example. There's a meritless lawsuit that is now filed in the Texas Federal Court. It's going to the Supreme Court to try to roll back the usage of methopristone, which is one of the drugs that we use to provide medication abortion care. So, this resolution here is so relevant because this lawsuit is just an example of how out-of-state actions by bad actors, by those who are hostile to women's healthcare, can impose their activism on medical care here in a state where abortion is legal. And, you know, we just, again, this, why this bill is so important right now. And finally, this legislation serves as an opportunity for the city of Baltimore to really give a resounding response that we don't tolerate bullying our residents, our care providers, or the support networks for healthcare providers. And by prohibiting the use of city funds, directing city agencies to refrain from storing reports on abortion, miscarriage, or any other reproductive healthcare or conducting surveillance related to patients, organizations, and providers for the purpose of determining if an abortion has occurred, this bill allows Baltimore's healthcare network to shield itself from these threats and any intimidation tactics of less progressive states. So, again, just in summary, I think this really shows where the City Council stands, where the city of Baltimore stands, and I want to thank you for standing with the patients of Maryland and the patients of Baltimore.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of the Committee. My name is Priya Hey Chathapathyai, or Chatterjee, and I'm Communications Manager at the Baltimore Abortion Fund, or BAF for short. BAF is a nonprofit organization that provides financial and practical support to Marylanders and people traveling to Maryland for abortion care. BAF welcomes the support of local governments in protecting and affirming our clients' right to privacy while seeking abortion care. In 2022, 35% of BAF's clients were from out-of-state and traveled to Maryland to receive abortion care. Of those clients, a majority were from the southeast, where the legal risks of seeking, providing, or supporting abortion care range from civil penalties to criminal prosecution. The threat of criminal prosecution is of extreme concern to both abortion seekers and community-based support organizations like BAF. States hostile to abortion care are actively preparing to intimidate and prosecute both abortion seekers and support groups. The Attorney General of Alabama has explicitly stated that the state will attempt to prosecute people and groups who facilitate travel for out-of-state abortions. Texas recently passed Senate Bill 20, a law that forbids prosecutors from adopting a policy of refusing to prosecute particular types of crimes, such as abortion cases. Should Council Bill 230185R be enacted, it'll follow several pieces of local and statewide protections of abortion care in Maryland, and it will further the city of Baltimore's commitment of being a safe place for abortion seekers. That includes this, of the aforementioned local and statewide protections, that includes State Senate Bill 786, or House Bill 812, which prevents state insurance exchanges from sharing information regarding healthcare protected in Maryland unless requested by the patient. And Senate Bill 856, House Bill 808, also known as the Reproductive Health Protection Act, shields abortion providers and supporters from out-of-state lawsuits intending to punish those seeking, providing, and supporting legally protected healthcare in Maryland. It would also build upon Council Bill 220110R, a resolution passed by the City Council in June 2022 that designates Baltimore City as an abortion rights protection jurisdiction. Recognizing that legal protections are not enough to guarantee access, Mayor Scott and council members also established the Abortion Protection Fund to better support abortion seekers, providers, and support organizations. The Abortion Protection Fund has been instrumental in our ability to meet the increasing demand for abortion care in our region, and last year, resources from the Abortion Protection Fund were used to provide $50,000 in financial support to 155 Baltimore City residents and patients. When compared to the same timeframe in the previous year, BAF tripled the number of Baltimore City clients and patients served, as well as the total amount of financial support provided. This year, the city renewed its support for the Abortion Protection Fund, demonstrating its commitment to abortion access by investing in the ecosystem of nonprofits that provide and facilitate abortion care in Maryland. So, we are grateful for the legal and financial measures that the city has taken to expand abortion access for residents and individuals who must travel for care, and we hope that the city will continue to pass proactive protections, including this bill, and continue to support the Abortion Protection Fund. For these reasons, and for the safety and freedoms of our clients, staff, and volunteers, the Baltimore Abortion Fund requests a favorable report on Council Bill 230185R. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to check to see if we have anyone in attendance virtually who would like to testify. If you would, please raise your hand so we can identify you to speak. Okay, that's going to conclude public testimony. And I do want to turn, before we recess the hearing, I do want to turn this over back to Councilwoman Porter. Did you have any closing remarks?
No, ma'am. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, everyone, for attending. This hearing is now in recess.